Are you the main speaker?
I guess.
It's kind of entertaining.
Can you tell me your full name?
Yeah.
So I can record it?
It's Mary Tatum.
What is it?
Mary Tatum. I grew up in Rosebud.
Okay.
I love Rosebud. Great place.
I know your father?
Yeah. Yeah. What's your name?
Reverend Gerald W. Spade, Senior.
Oh, okay.
Are you a county agent?
Uh, no, I'm a doctoral learner. I am actually doing my dissertation. This all kind of like falls together in a really cool way.
Yeah.
I'm actually studying Coolport for my research.
Oh, okay.
And I'm studying property like.
That's your dissertation?
My dissertation is on Coolport.
Wow. That'll be interesting.
Yeah, so it's really cool.
You're gonna publish your dissertation? You're gonna publish it?
Yeah, that's part of the requirement I have for you. So when I actually, when it's published, I'll redact, um, I'll like, I'll redact all the information out of that publication that would identify Coolport because we wouldn't necessarily want to create a stigma.
Okay. Well, maybe, I don't know.
Well, maybe. But, um, so part of that is to remove that too.
Bring it to council and have them enact it. Then you can leave the names in.
It's that angle. And then I got some lovely burn they were meaning it's a loan.
Well, this is just a gimbal.
That's right. Very cool. There's always that last step. You catch my what? Right. Pink ones. Yeah. This is your slip. We just talked about it, so we do. Well, I was part of eating once.
Oh, those things put the killer in the little chair. But I see we don't have little chairs.
Not you.
Oh, no. Oh, there's a little well, what'd you do?
I fell on the right one.
At home or?
Okay.
Good girl.
I figured I'd catch you while you were still standing and we'll just do the pledge and say.
Very good.
All right. Momma, sign us, please. Pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I was just gonna complain. We're pushing each other.
I'm sorry, between me and her, we could not bring it down. Sorry. She's hopping along, I mean, one good arm and I mean, this was the key gap for it.
Right. They stood stiff or did what?
Roll call, please. President Bobby Trump here. First President Clinton's water. Robert Lee.
Yes.
The Donny one. Yeah. Sean, anyone?
Here.
Mayor Margaret, I don't know. Here. Okay, um, this is a special meeting that was called due to light going to Coolport. Um, it caught my attention that there's a possibility for our Coolport to qualify for some grants. And, um, we have a guest here, Ms. Mary Tatum, who, um, who's, um, with us in late on the subject. So I give it forward to you. Okay, cool. I did not crank handouts up for you guys. I figured I'd just explain it, see if it's something you're interested in, and then we can get down into the weeds if, you know, if you guys decide that's something you want to pursue. But we have an opportunity to create a consortium of any municipalities within the GIDA. So that's if you don't know what the GIDA is, it's the Essential Chamber of Commerce from the southern part of Clearfield County along with a piece of Cambria County. That would create an ability to consider our application region all. Which is neat. So the grant itself is only $300,000. Um, so that one not be for just Coolport. And it's the Light Mediation Grant. And it's through the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. When we were kind of kicking it around to see if it's something we wanted to pursue, the discussion came about in essentially a capacity for how each municipality could function in that grant. And what that would hold like for Coolport Borough is we would go to the county office for like, for the back tax, or what's the title of that? You know that, that program is where they keep like the tax, or it's like?
Assessment.
The assessment office. And they have a thing, a repository of properties that have not had taxes paid on them, that aren't a share of sale, that don't sold. So they're free and clear for purchase. Um, they had done research on them as a county to see if there were liens on that property. So with that, you would be able to get that property very cheap. The grant would cover, that would get reimbursed to each municipality, the cost of that purchase. Um, then we would have to do submitting to get the contract, a contractor to done with that building. Okay? And we follow all of the requirements within Clearfield Borough, um, for permits and whatever else. And then that would get done of. You guys would then have the, the borough would then have the ability to sell that property off. You guys don't have to. We have it, you don't have to do anything. You have a free and clear lot that would typically have a motor hooked up to it. Either people could build on that, or they could choose to turn it into a parking lot, or they could turn it and, you know, they can use that land. Um, it creates an ability for the municipality to start to generate some revenue and also to start getting some tax income coming back in from those properties that you weren't getting tax, um, tax income from. So really, it's, we'd be looking at a project over a year. Um, I've got to talk with the four other municipalities to see if they're interested in pursuing this as well before we could really start to go into that, looking into that repository to identify properties to go after. Because if we had more ability, like, if two of them didn't want to do it, we might be able to then go back to the municipalities that we talked with and say, hey, we've got a little bit more to work with, we could go for another property.
How many municipalities are you aiming for first?
Well, you guys are the first one I'm talking to, so we're gonna talk with all five municipalities within the industrial development association.
So that would be White Township, Brute Township, Ardena Borough, and that's the other one?
Coolport Borough, Perry Township.
Perry.
And that doesn't, and they might not be interested. It just depends on each of the, and each of the, um, each of the municipalities needs to make that decision on if they're interested. And there's no guarantee on this. We're gonna write the grant, we're gonna see what we can do.
Are you going to tap into block grants?
No, this is specifically for just this light mediation at this time. Do you guys have any questions?
I was just curious as to how many municipalities would be going in. And, uh, to get, you know, we have, we've already won it that. Uh, but we're the first one you've talked to now.
Right. Um, you guys came, um, we had Kevin has had your GIDA meeting and listened to us talk, and Lisa Plotlick from the county was there to speak a little bit to the grant as well. Um, it, there was definite, it was evident there was interest in Coolport to.
There is.
To work on this. My thought is that we can start small, right? And we can start and do something actionable. We can take that, then we can look at as a community, how we can.
I agree, we have a lot of light buildings.
Right, so there's a lot of potential.
There's a lot of them that pay taxes.
Yeah, and those are not properties, that's a great point, I'm glad you brought that up. The properties that we would be looking at and that we would be, or making this grant to, to essentially rehab, right? Or to, you know, demo, would not be ones that are paying taxes.
I'd say out of the list that I gave to Mayor Sue, I think there's only two.
And I know. There, when I talked to Lisa Plotlick, she did come, she said when she checked the repository for Clearfield Borough, um, there were two, um, two on there. And, um, so I know for a fact you guys do have two, but I did not dive into that.
Yeah.
Um, some of the other things that we would need to look at in that grant would be having, we have the county did check into us, make sure that there weren't liens, but they recommend that you still have an assessor. It might be a.
Not an assessor, an extractor.
Yeah, somebody that's gonna look into it, I know 60 years back, there are three property owners. Make sure there's no. Right, and it's essentially a safety mechanism so that you guys don't inadvertently, um, take on more debt, right? Nobody wants to do that, so.
But you can then have, if there's even electric, somebody hasn't paid their water bill or electric bill, and you buy a tax bill or something, you're responsible to pay that unless the borough or the courts.
Right, that's right.
So that's, that's why we would want to make sure we're looking at this very diligently. And that's part of what we can use some of that grant money for. So 300,000 sounds like a lot of money, but we've got a safe in going out that we would be demoing that building and, um, doing that background, background check on it. I don't know if that's not the right word, but.
Did you read an abstracter?
You can have a lawyer, a lawyer or an abstracter.
Yeah, and lawyers cost more money than abstracters. So we would probably have to go for an abstracter versus.
Now, is that the only cost we'd have?
The only, actually, everything that I, the only upfront cost you guys would have to have, and that's only if we get the grant, because we can't do anything ahead of time, is, um, the initial money when we, when you guys would buy that property out of the repository, which would be a few hundred dollars, and then you would get reimbursed that.
It reimburses a lot more than I've seen some grants do. Because that will cover a whole, like, circle of things they recognize in that grant, of all these things that would need to be covered with a lawyer, um, a whole bunch of different things. The abstracter, which they know exactly where to go. I was doing one the other day and I got done, and I looked at the girl and I said, I'm not taking, no. And she said, well, that means there's no lien on it. And I said, oh, okay. She said, on that system. I said, what? There's other systems in the courthouse, an abstracter knows how to hear all, you know.
But doesn't that grant include an administration fee?
Well, there are, there, it gets not much. It, so the abstracter's separate, that, um, that can be built into the grant. We, that grant is set up to where you can only do 2% for actual administration. So that would cover the audit of the grant. Um, along with any insurance of the, um.
That's the audit of administration.
Lisa said that we'd be able to take that out of the 2%.
Oh, we can tell that.
Yeah.
I know they said you could build it in.
Yeah, it comes out of that, uh, 2%.
I'm just wondering what the administration.
It's very, it's very specific, so it would be able to cover like, um, any additional insurances of the GIDA we need to take on to manage that grant along with that audit that we would have to have for those records.
How does the GIDA feel about this?
Well, there was a lot of discussion, and they said it's worth a shot if it's gonna benefit the municipalities. The biggest thing, um, when talking with membership from the GIDA was that it was important for the municipalities to take ownership of those properties during the process.
So they were, they were in favor of?
They were, and if.
What would they be? What, you know, what would their term, what?
They would be the grand administrator.
They'd be, okay, that's right.
So the municipalities don't have to actually administer the grant, they would just be in a consortium. Which is kind of, I think, a really cool concept, to see the, the son of a country county come together.
There's a whole lot of different things. It's, it's not just a tear down, it's to redo a house. It's maybe in good shape and somebody can't afford, you know, to do it, or if it's empty, buy it, but. Lisa said go for the ones that have not been paying their taxes, get them back. Because even puts an empty lot in, but nobody's getting taxes. I'll use example next to him.
Right.
The building that Richard Adam owns, and he does own it. He tells people he doesn't, but he doesn't, I don't have it with me. I know he owes $22,000 in taxes on it.
Skip that part, we should think of people.
Yeah. And then, um, the one on the other side of him owes $18,000 in taxes. They're both, the brickwork knows it's a hazard. The bricks are falling off of it, um, onto the sidewalk. And now the ones being on his house, and there's really nothing he can do about it, but it was costing probably quite $10,000 to tear it down.
At least.
Or any means, you know, what? Lisa said that, um, Richard's, that big old progress building is up for judicial sale this year. And she was gonna check, we talked to her.
I haven't talked to her.
She was gonna check, she probably does know then, but if it, if it's a judicial sale, then that goes before the judge, and he can just wipe everything off, the taxes, any backleaves of any claim on it, he can wipe it off and you can get property like a $400. So, and then it would cost to tear it down. But then what you do, and you don't have to make profit on it. Profit on it if you want to, but if you wanna cover something, you know, debt bill or something, then you have to sell that, that property, I don't think you want to keep it.
Well, my question is if you said it would cost like, per cent, like $400, and he wipes, the judge wipes everything out, right? Is there other people that can like bid on that?
I don't think you can judicial sell.
Yeah, they can.
Well, I think everybody can buy at a judicial, I could be wrong on that.
But you gotta remember that that is not a full lot.
Yeah, no. But it, it, um, make people wipe everything out, you know, you pay, I don't know. Lisa will know these answers to it, she is a reporter.
Yeah, Lisa wasn't able to make it today, but she did say she's on, on the schedule to be here.
Next Wednesday, yeah. And if you deal with a, if you deal with a bank and go, if there's a lien on something, not a person, but a municipality, or like the GIDA or something, the bank will usually deal, will be invited to get it kind of out of their hair, I guess I would say. But it's a charitable write-off deduction for them if, like, you know, the GIDA is not profitable. So the bank can use that Thursday for giving $10,000, then. I think Marge Cashox's old house up here, which is falling down, I think there's something like $30,000 owed on that yet. Now, it's not, you know, nobody's getting taxes off of it. The borough isn't, county isn't, it's ridiculous. Get it down. And in some of these cases, you have people who are willing to, they want to buy a land. You know, they're, they're ready to pay for it, you can get it down. It's just that not everybody has the money to tear a place down and pay the taxes and the liens and. I think it's fantastic, this is, it's a, it's a big grant, there's a lot to it. She's willing to do what they're doing.
Now, you said that, um, this project here with this grant, we have to, this is for a year, like, we have to have this grant closed out within a year, correct?
Yeah, but remember, that won't be for you guys. Your part of the project would be closed out in a year. It would be the GIDA closing that grant and doing the entire recording.
Okay, so, um, we're looking at numerous buildings in Coolport that are lighted. So let's say we, we take on these couple buildings, we get the ones that are easy to obtain. But, you know, like one that she was talking about up here, of course, there's a couple other ones here in Coolport that are just the same, you know, as this one up here. How often could we get something like this to kind of tackle the rest of these? And little by little, and do something like this to.
You might have.
I think everybody wants to see grants. I think it depends on availability and trying. Trying with the, um, larger organizations that are funded, right? Because if they're saying light is an issue in the state, they're gonna be putting grants out. There's no guarantee on the grant. What I would say is that as you guys start to tackle the problem and take positive initiatives to do that, you're starting to develop data that you can then take and use that as a success story in your next, your own allocation maybe, or.
Chip away a little.
Yeah, you start, you start to paint that picture of how you guys are improving your community.
And that, and lately, I've, you know, that's a $1.2 million street skate project. That's not counting the road, if you weren't in on that, and all that. But when you go down the street, it's kind of undoing some of the street skates.
Right.
So, but I know some people are even pulling their own weeds in front of the place. We're hoping they do that, but. Did you, did she say anything about, um, there's the 10% match?
Right, um, there is a 10% match. There was some discussion around the fact if it could be an income match, or if we would need, there's a waiver in there about.
The income.
The income, so we could actually pull census data, and I think we'd be able to argue between even all, any municipality that would become part of that, if we don't meet that threshold.
Yeah, you won't need to match Coolport because it is below that whatever level was. Because that's some research different times, and Lisa has all that, you won't need to research that. But the only thing I want to bring up then is if you, if you were going to do the other municipalities, you're going to have to have that from all of them also. That maybe have it, and you won't need research, I don't have that.
Right.
But $300,000, dude, if you take, you know, 5% out for different causes, they would incur ten, that's still a lot of money. You should be able to do some properties with that.
Are you aware of Act 45?
How about you?
If we don't get the, the, the loan, the borough is responsible for lighted property.
Right, right, I understand that. But Mr. Shady, we have a $100,000 budget, you know.
That's why these grants are so important.
They are, they are extremely important.
What do you mean that the borough would be responsible for it?
If you read Act 45, the borough is responsible if the property owner defaults. It's right in the code. Check with, check with your solicitor, you'll, she'll explain.
Lisa's pretty excited. How about it, we can, we can.
Why can't the borough, on the properties that, that, like, you know, there are people paying taxes on, owners are paying taxes on, but they, they need to be taken down, we're set to.
Well, that's where, you know, you really got to, your ordinances come into effect, okay? Because when you, and you have to be more, you know, specific on your ordinances. I, I think we had this insane ordinances back in the 1800s where you couldn't tie your donkey to the.
To a donkey.
No, 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 I said, we could that up. I said, you know, it was like, we had these insane ordinances way back when where you couldn't tie a donkey to a hitching coach or something like them.
What you, what you do, Rick, is you send them a letter.
Huh?
You send them a letter, those people, they're in those places, and you tell them what, what they're in, uh, I lost for one word, where they're not doing their ordinance, or they're not following the following ordinance. And you.
And you have to cite the ordinance. Yes, but you have to make sure all your, you know, the ordinances in place, and then.
That's probably, we probably know that, and that's probably, I'm guessing, not, nobody.
You never got.
Burn dog, if you're not, why should I worry about?
Oh, you never got a letter, did you?
Huh?
You never got a letter? No, no, good. That's, you're like, yeah, you're only doing this. Then you tell them that's their.
I hope so.
Then you tell them that's their first letter, then the next one, and the second letter. But you have to have an agreement with, uh, everybody that follows after that. They have, those, those people have to help you out and back you up on those ordinances.
I know that. The ordinance in place, that's a day's night.
I know you had a fine problem everywhere, not just here. You got.
Oh, everywhere.
Every county, every town, the state.
You can go online and file complaints, it goes through, it used to go through Delano. Now it goes through the PUC, and they're much more rigid. The, the Boca Code of Act 45 supersedes the borough. It's a statewide ordinance, and it supersays, sees them. And it does state that, that at the end result, if the property owner doesn't do anything, the borough is responsible.
I still don't understand that.
And you're still mad at her, explain that to me again.
If I had the code with me, I would show it to you, it's in the code. Act, just go on the internet and pull up, uh, the Boca Code for Pennsylvania. It's a statewide ordinance, Act 45.
But how does it fall back on us that we're responsible because they're not paying?
If they default, and let, and it's to go through the court system, the end result is.
We're stuck with it.
You're stuck with it. And, and she's talking about repositories, so it's gone beyond the ownership now. And usually, doesn't the repository have the judicial sales? That nobody bought it, at a stake.
The two, the two that are in the repository have already went to judicial sale.
Nobody wants.
And those, those ones are on Main Street.
And nobody wants.
Yeah, but the county decided to do one judicial sale here, Lisa said.
Okay.
I said, what? You mean in the county? Huh?
No, I don't know if you're.
Are you talking about county, or are you talking about like, one whole, like, judicial sale for the county?
I don't know. She's saying.
I'm not sure about that.
You can say it, you can say it. The list of the properties right now, from yourself.
It is, I agree.
You know, but, and if you notice, even Altoona, they started landbag there. There's five or six different types of things you can do, and each property is a little different. And I think about a year and a half ago, Lisa and Jody had gone to Pittsburgh to learn about landbags, and since that, Altoona has instituted that way to do theirs. And they, this thing with these absentee landlords, really bugs me. They live away, and, and they don't put, put a place right, and then up here, and someone, you're like. That guy from Michigan owns Walt the Shinsy's old building.
From Michigan.
That's the Kerry judge.
I'm using it as, I'm using it as the other one. You pay taxes on it, don't they?
Yeah, they do.
Exactly. And then, you know, somebody, you know, the Sam Po up there, Bill, he's a game jockey. He's a big slumlord in Altoona, he's got lots of them. And he keeps telling churches he's gonna fix this up, he wants $64,000 for it. He's like. But the taxes are up to date on that, so, like Lisa said, take the ones that are easier to get at right now.
And then he's this one, I think we all know, would be the progress office. Maybe not, but honestly, you start to look into it. Who knows?
Nothing's that are easy, though.
If you start never getting.
Anything worth it is not good.
Correct.
There's a lot of means, so I go on and on, but I did that for a while, yeah.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Tatum?
Mary, you said that were your first ones, now one day you'll start meeting with the other. Um, I'm gonna give Brady Blake a call and see, um, when we get time to talk with the Kerry's township. And I have the contact information for everyone else, I'm just gonna do, I'm gonna call them and see if they want to meet. Um, if it's something that interests them, then we'll take it there.
So that's you within the next month or two.
I'm thinking probably for the next couple days because the grant, if we, if, if we apply for that grant, it's due by July 31st.
Oh, you're.
So we've got, the, the advantage Coolport has is they already have light ordinance, I think. There's an order, you guys have something in the books that counts for that, and I'm not sure if it's type of light ordinance. You guys already have some ordinances on the books that we can use. And you guys, you, you have Main Street properties that are in the repository. So you guys have actionable steps that would improve Main Street. You know what I mean? And then, once we kind of tackle that, and we can look at down the road, how do we take care of the rest of the township? Or the borough, sorry.
The county has an ordinance book also. I have a copy of that.
So there's, um, each municipality has to have a response to light. We'll put that in, that would have to be built into it. I figured we'd look at, um, some feasibility studies that, um, we have to develop the history of the area because we want to have a narrative about our history. Um, the budget shouldn't be too hard to, um, develop. I think it's gonna depend on figuring out which. I think it's gonna depend on figuring out which municipalities, um, wanna be involved. And then we can take it from there. Um, we'll have to, I don't know if it's a letter of commitment or what would the information municipality, well, if, if we do move to, to write this grant, um, we'll need some kind of, like, letter of commitment that if we get the grant.
A resolution.
Could be a resolution. Could be just, um, a letter of commitment. I was even thinking an interagency agreement or an intermunicipality agreement. Um, just cashing out what each municipality is responsible for. And like, essentially, like, what the plan is for each municipality.
They listed pretty well over 42.
So, we'll be able to, I don't think it'll take a lot to write. I think it's gonna take some time. It's gonna take a couple of weekends to get that all together. But it's feasible.
It's a lot of work.
It's worth it though, right?
Absolutely. It's just the time crunch and like, he said, it's already cursed and like, it can be done, but it's gonna, it's gonna be?
It's gonna be a lot of work. So, like, if people start to, if, if, if the municipalities put together and say, "Yes, we wanna go for this," then I'm probably gonna say, "We need to have a, a group of people that wanna work on this." And we come together as a team and we each are taking pieces of it. Maybe not the brightest pieces. Maybe it's, uh, you know, I, I don't know. We're gonna have to work together as a team at the end of the day.
It took five years to get the streets get done. In the beginning, 10.
Are you going to chair this?
I'm, I'm not sure what that would look like yet. I think we have to make sure that people want to be involved first.
So, you're saying that each property that's in the repository that would be of interest to the borough, then the borough would be responsible for the initial purchase of that?
So, if we get the grant, let's say in the perfect world, we get this grant, okay? And, and let's just say all five municipalities sign on. And I'm, I mean, I don't.
Be too positive.
I'm gonna say, "We're gonna get the grant. We're, be positive here."
That's our street stakebook, yeah.
And let's just say all five municipalities say that, "Yes, this is something we wanna do." And let's say all five municipalities have two properties in the repository. And, and like, you never have to, you know what I mean? So, like, if each municipality has two properties and each municipality agrees to offer just two properties, it's not a lot. But, yeah, that's 10 properties across the region that we were able to help fix, right? And get back into where the municipalities are collecting tax on them. I mean, it, it's small, but it's a small actionable step. And then, as the, you know, the municipalities are, um, are taking that action, that just fuels that fire for the future.
I think in some cases, they wouldn't even need to buy something, right? Depending on the scenario of that property and what's going on.
I'm pretty sure, and, and I don't know, but I'm not sure that. From what I've understood with the repository, there was a purchase that's done, but it's very small. It's like $400 bucks. So, it's, it's very small. Um, but that's something we can actually build into the grant, um, is that reimburse my costs to each municipality for that.
What do you, do, you don't think that GIDA would, would want to do that and put up the money since the borough doesn't have a lot of money? And I'm saying that GIDA does. I don't mean that.
I, I think, I think the, the thought process is that by each municipality taking ownership, that's part of that, only part of this project. That, you know, you guys take that ownership and then you guys can sell that.
And we'll put in the grant too, that if that's going on.
I think it really should buy it.
I think mission statement of GIDA is different than, I mean, they're trying to support business and, and new industry. I don't think they're into the property owning.
Right, and, and they, they were very clear on that. They did want to own the property.
But clear, if they still had property, they'd be got a business or something.
Right, if you guys resell it and if somebody wants to put something there or build something there, that's a fantastic opportunity.
Now, if the purchase price isn't working as a reimbursement, is it possible and/or ethical for individuals to front the money to the borough for a property interest?
You can't.
I don't.
Like, there's, there's a thing in there that says about, I have to read it. I haven't read through the thing ones. But they're about not.
Whoa, look here.
Crowning money.
Mr. Rupp, can you sign the sign-in sheet?
What's that?
Can you sign the sign-in sheet behind you? Thank you.
Yeah, no, we don't know who yours is. Go sign it.
Something that would look a little, and one thing they said in there is donations of money. And I don't know if that comes from somebody, now that would be a little unethical. But I think a good thing to do would, um, ask, there's different places you could ask for some money, like $5,000 or something and, and one.
Is foundations proven?
Anyhow, from somebody.
Foundations?
And then that will, that's a good faith from somebody in your community that, and your place will be in there. Anything to make yourself feel better, they say.
Well, like, say for instance, if, um, I think there was an organization that wanted to donate towards the cause. Or like, um, somebody, somebody did a fundraiser for the blighted buildings. Like, I don't know, somebody sold Mariana Hoveys and said, "Here, this is, you know, for the destruction of the buildings" or something, like a church or somebody. You know, and, and they donated so much money towards it. Would that, is, is that what you mean?
Yes, it shows, say, from a business or something in the community. And there's a, a section in there that, um, talks about that. So, you figure, if, if they're going to waive their 10% match, if you come up with somebody who, you know, say, "Wow, we just raised, you know, $5,000 towards it," that's gonna look good on that paper.
Well, it's gonna show community value then.
Okay.
The intergovernmental part of it is really what Pennsylvania is looking for.
And there probably, probably will be more coming along, you know? Sure doesn't mean any other.
Hopefully.
Yes.
Lisa just got one too.
Did she?
But not this one, but she, she just got one. And she has to administer that to the whole county. But, as I, the state is finally starting to help more.
Oh, yeah, I, I know.
Because all the communities are crying about it. It's just everywhere.
That's right.
Does anybody else have any more questions? Any, any comments?
My only question would be, what would our next step be at this point? Um, just waiting to hear back from you on the other municipalities?
Well, if you guys are interested in doing, like, are you guys interested in this? Yes? Like, after we talked about a little bit, it's everything still. But you get what I mean, like?
To me, it's, um, it's.
I mean, this was something that we have been.
You could go to the other municipalities.
Yes, if I, yeah, it, it helps with me if I'm like, "Coleport's in."
Yeah, you, you can't exactly calm down.
And that's okay. We'll have to take the whole 300,000.
Yeah, pretty much.
There are, I see some like, I don't know, like, hearts.
Yeah, it's wild.
Mine's pretty good.
I think it's too good an opportunity to pass up.
Yeah, that's true.
Do you all have a?
Is there a motion?
Make a motion. And you're taking a motion?
All right. There you go. I can't make a motion because I'm the president, so you don't?
I have a motion.
Okay. Which motion?
Being a motion to join the, the first member of the consortium for the blighted buildings.
Okay, right, a second for that.
Second then.
Well, all those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion there.
That, you mean only if, you said join the consortium, but you mean if the other ones don't want it, you don't want to?
No, no, no. Just be the first one and definitely in our.
Sean's being positive thinking.
Yep, positive thinking.
You have to, sometimes you do a little exact of these motions.
Okay, so what we can do, um, once I start to talk to people, I have your phone, right? I have your phone number and I can call you and let you know what I'm finding out.
Okay.
Um, then we'll start to take some actionable steps for this. I think if we all are together on it, you know, we can at least get the grant together, right? And a good grant. We're gonna have a well-written grant. Um, and, um, worst thing is gonna happen to Rachel now.
Yeah.
And then, I think we come back together as a community and we'll get other options.
Your deadline's the 31st of July.
July, yeah.
And then, if, if you don't get this one, there'll be another one along and she'll have, because we, we didn't think we'd get another facade grant. It's been, we kept applying everywhere, we had the $30,000. And we'll never get another one because there's 3,000 applications a year for it. They go into Harrisburg. So, and we already got one. We're not gonna get one. We might have $50,000. So, you just keep going back and try and hook your number, who's up, I guess. Keep going.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Uh, I have a personal problem. I took the, this has been a closed session for that.
Um, yeah, we can do that. When we're done?
No.
Yeah, well, I mean, before we?
No.
Okay, um, also, um, before we go into an executive session, um, as Mr. Spade was setting up, um, I had made comment about the different cameras. I am concerned for safety reasons and also his equipment. I'm sure it costs a lot of money. Um, and I was concerned about the cameras. I don't want anybody tripping over them. He did set it back a little bit. I also don't want his equipment, um, to get broken. Um, and he stated, and correct me if I'm wrong, that that was your problem if anything happened. I also want to bring to your, you know, awareness that somebody can trip and fall. That one's in the lockway. I also have to make note, I don't want cameras on the table. Um, this is our workspace. So, if you would please be so kind from here on out not to put cameras on the table.
I can.
I know that up at the other, um, in the other room, we do have the window sill where you don't have that here. And I understand that. Um, I'm concerned about the lockway. And, um, so I wanted to put any minutes that if anything happens to his equipment. Um, but he was well aware that I didn't make no page, or did suggest to him that cameras were not to be placed around the room. Um, and he is well aware that if anything were to happen, this is his problem.
I have $3 million.
What's that?
I have $3 million in blighted property insurance.
Uh, well, not if somebody gets hurt. So, um, anything, anybody else have anything to say? Any comments?
Thanks for listening.
Um, I really appreciate all your help and everything.
Sure.
Thanks. I mean, it's great to take your time to come here and do this. I, I certainly thank you for that.
That's a shame. It's a caution. All right.
Wait, just a sec.
Um, sure, sure. Um, we're gonna stay, um, we're gonna stick around, um, and go into an executive session here, so, um, because Mr. Rupp has a concern.
And this is for personnel?
Uh, yes, it's for personnel.
Okay, thank you.
Um, this was not planned, so I have no idea what's going on.
Oh, are you just? Mary likes the street. Thank you, Mary.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I know you now, but I'm only here for you.
Make video comments by appointment. For an interview, contact Vision Press at visionpress@windstream.net or come to the office at 712 Main Street, Coleport, Pennsylvania. Each presentation of the Coleport Borough Council Meeting entails 20 to 30 hours of digital composing after the videoing of the meeting. The intent of the video is to let the public know the work of the Coleport Borough Council. Freedom of the press is a constitutional right that council affirmed in an oath. The president in tonight's meeting took a step to suppress the free exercise of freedom of the press to sit in any position in the room. No other person or entity was given a notice that they could not repose in any manner they desired. Cameras were prejudiced. In all the years of video recording, there has not been any incidents of someone being harmed physically. However, Counselor Jack Rupp pulled the plug on the camera intentionally, saying it was the taxpayer money being used. It was discovered the cost of running the camera was less than 25 cents. The president acted in an arbitrary and capricious manner, mostly due to the fact things are not being done in a lawful manner. Where is the audit for 2018, 2019? Why no fire company payment?